Good evening. Tonight's meeting of the Arlington School Committee is being conducted in person and through the use of Zoom. This meeting is being simultaneously broadcast on ACMI, and the meeting is being recorded. Because we have a member participating remotely, all votes are required to be taken by roll call. Persons wishing to access the meeting using Zoom may find information on how to do so on the town's website. The posted agenda and supporting materials for this meeting are also available on the town's website. Due to open meeting law restrictions, the committee cannot participate in or access the Zoom chat function during the meeting. While everyone is welcome to observe this meeting, active remote participation requires advance notice. I'm going to read the land acknowledgement. We do that, I'll explain why we do that, after Indigenous Peoples' Day or near Indigenous Peoples' Day. "On April 26, 2021, under Article 85, Arlington Town met a voting 222 to 1 to 2 to encourage all town entities to celebrate and recognize the heritage of all the peoples indigenous to Massachusetts and Arlington by including a land acknowledgement at the beginning of the town's public meetings. The Arlington School Committee shall include at the beginning of its organizational meeting, at the beginning of its first regular meeting in October, or other such meeting date as is approximate to Indigenous Peoples' Day, and as part of graduation ceremonies, a land acknowledgement that shall be read in a substantially similar form to the following. We acknowledge that the town of Arlington is located on the ancestral lands of the Massachusetts tribe, the tribe of indigenous peoples from whom the colony, province, and Commonwealth have taken their name. We pay our respects to the ancestral bloodline of the Massachusetts tribe and their descendants who still inhabit historic Massachusetts territories today." In addition, oh, that's it. It's a comment from Liz. All right. Thank you very much. So at this time, we move to public comment. Individuals or groups representative or representatives may address the committee on items of school business. The length of the public comment segment shall normally be no more than 20 minutes. Speakers must identify themselves by name and address, and will be allowed up to three minutes to present their material. Speakers may offer such objective criticism of the school operations and programs that concern them, but in public session, the committee will not hear personal complaints about school personnel nor against any member of the school committee except, I'm sorry, of the school community except for the school committee or the superintendent as their capacity as the operational leader of the Arlington Public Schools. Under most circumstances, administrative channels are the proper means for disposition of legitimate complaints involving staff members. The public is reminded the school committee does not hold jurisdiction over the performance of school personnel other than the superintendent of schools." Our first and only speaker tonight is Ms. Stephanie Ford. Come on forward, Stephanie. Okay.
I feel like there should be roaring applause. Come on down.
I know, we should do better on that.
Sarah, hi. I'm Stephanie Ford. I live at 12 Lachlan Ave. I have two kids in the Arlington Public Schools. I had planned to come today and speak about the CPAC, not realizing the CPAC was going to be here, so today is extemporaneous speaking time. I spoke in May and happened to be here at the same time as the CPAC, which was also a coincidence that night, but a lot of that evening boiled into communication. About 20 minutes of the conversation about CPAC from all corners of the room was about communication. How can we communicate better? How can we functionally do it better? How can the format of the communication be better? How can the content of the communication be better? So I was going to pick up that thread this week. I'm here for myself. I'm not here as CPAC, but as a town resident, I would like to say I'm very much in support of House Bill 504. I don't know if they named it that on purpose, but there's actually a bill called House Bill 504 about CPACs. And it's about CPACs and LPACs, I believe. And the bill says, hey, school committees, it would be great, since we have already told you as a state that you have to have a CPAC to communicate with your parents, with your special ed people, et cetera, it would be great if you would actually have a seat on your committee, a non-voting seat, which actually gives that person a lot of freedom, a seat on your committee appointed by the CPAC and the LPAC, so that you are mindful of their positions, their concerns, et cetera, and able to communicate with that. And I thought brilliant communication. So I hope to bring that solution, and now it's like a warm-up act for the CPAC presentation, I assume. I'll just throw out a couple of soundbites that I was going to use. These are the slides from a training. I know, I'm not supposed to show slides. I'll read the slides. There's a training from the Mass Association of School Committees entitled, "What School Committee Members Can Do to Support CPACs and LPACs?" And two of the items on that list, invite a PAC representative to sit with you as an ex officio participant in your meetings, and evaluate and create district policies that consider all students and families by soliciting input from PACs. And I want to focus on that nuance to say, I hope that the communication with the CPAC doesn't become only about IEP data and IEP progress, and that the collaboration and the advisory from the CPAC is about all students with disability and the experience that they have. Because the experience of people with disabilities is not the same as the experience of other people. And I would be very eager to have everyone, every meeting, every committee, every subcommittee, every working group have the voice of people with disabilities.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I want to just go around and introduce those who are here. Julie Keys is here to represent the Arlington Education Association. Thank you very much. And Sophia DiStefano is here. Do you want to give us an update on what's happening at Arlington High School? Sophia's a junior at IHS.
Sure, yes. So we had our PSATs today. I didn't take it myself, but I heard that they were pretty tricky. And in our council, we have done our annual constitution ratification. We have been planning homecoming, and the ticket sales start next week. We have officially combined our Citizen of the Month and Staff of the Month to just be Citizens of the Month, because that made a lot more sense. And we are picking our October people soon, and we have Dean and Principal appreciation coming up next Monday. So if you see anyone soon, tell them you appreciate them, and we have something special planned for them. We are also having our MASC Officer Shop this weekend, and so I hope that we gain some good advice from that. That's all for that day.
Thank you so much. Sounds like a lot going on. Okay, CPAC report. You guys are up.
Okay. I will share your slides, and you can tell me when to go to the next one.
Yeah, that's great. Okay.
Just introduce yourself.
What was that?
If you could introduce yourself at the beginning.
Yes, happy to introduce myself. My name's Elizabeth McCorder. I'm the co-chair of the Arlington CPAC, which is the Special Education Parent Advisory Council. This is my second year as co-chair and my third year actually presenting the survey results to the school committee. I have two amazing dyslexic kids, one of whom is a seventh grader at the Carroll School, and the other is a third grader at the Bracket School. And I am also neurodivergent, so I bring that perspective into everything I do. We can flip to the next slide. So I just wanted to start out with a reminder of what the CPAC actually is. Our role is to advise, to advocate, and to guide. As Stephanie shared just a moment ago, the CPAC is actually required by law in the state of Massachusetts. Not all states have that exact designation, but Massachusetts does. And we operate as an advisory council. We are entirely volunteer-driven, and we see it as our role is to do a couple of things. One is to really focus on improving educational outcomes and well-being for all students, in particular, students with disabilities, to identify unmet needs so that they can be lifted up to the school committee and the administration, and to help shape the development of programs, to evaluate those programs and policies, et cetera, as necessary. We, as part of this, we meet once a month. Oftentimes, Allison Elmer joins us, as well as other folks. Liz Exton joined us in our last meeting to share some information about the school committee. So we're a convening body, and then we're also an advisory group. I will ask you to shift to the next slide, please. So before we jump into the primary purpose of this presentation, which is to share out the results of our survey that was administered last year, I just wanted to re-ground us in the five-year strategic plan, which is front and center for our leadership, our board as the CPAC. We're very focused on how can we help advance the goals of the strategic plan. And so as a reminder, this is the vision, is that Arlington Public Schools is to be an equitable educational community where all learners feel a sense of belonging, experience growth and joy, and are empowered to shape their own futures and contribute to a better world. We can flip to the next slide, please. Within that, the strategic plan breaks down focal groups that are specific groups of students that are, for whatever set of reasons, not seeing the same results as their peer group. And so these are a special focus of the strategic plan, and one of those groups is students with disabilities, oftentimes categorized as students with IEPs. We can flip to the next slide, please. Within that measure, and this is to provide kind of broader context for where the CPAC survey actually sits within a broader data set, some of which we're going to hear about from Dr. Ford Walker after this presentation, but I think it's really important to contextualize this information so that it can make sense in the broader conversation that I know all of you are having. So there are three key data points that the focal groups and progress for the focal groups are assessed by. The first is academic achievement. I'm just going to run through the headlines here so we can flip through the data points really quickly and so that I don't repeat things that Dr. Ford Walker will explain much better than I do. So first, academic achievement. I do want to celebrate that there was significant growth in academic achievement and that Arlington hit a significant milestone, which was celebrated the other day with the visit from Dussie. And that's fantastic, but growth for students with disabilities remains flat and significantly and persistently below grade level. From the perspective of attendance, chronic absenteeism for students with disabilities is over 10 points higher than that for students without disabilities, which is two and a half times greater than their non-disabled peer group. And if these kids aren't in school, they're not going to learn. So we're seeing how those things kind of come together to create more challenges in the long run. And then finally, student, family, and staff experience. This is where the CPAC survey is one of several opportunities for parents and students to engage. I'll give a shout-out to the Panorama Survey, which also actually aligns with the results that we'll be talking about here. And the big takeaway is that you've heard me talk about this already twice in my tenure with the CPAC. The results are very similar to what you've already heard me say. So if we could just flip to the next slide. So I want to just give a, or you're already there. Yeah, thank you. Just for folks who aren't kind of in the depths of student data, just wanted to highlight the difference between achievement gap and student growth performance, because we see both of these show up in how we assess whether or not students within focal groups are making progress. So the achievement gap is the difference between, within a school district, between students in a focal group and students who are not part of that focal group. So students with disabilities, students without disabilities. Student growth performance is a measure that actually looks at how students, an individual student or a group of students, is doing in comparison to other students across the state of Massachusetts, which I think is really important, because our strategic plan is about the town of Arlington, not the state of Massachusetts. And so we really want to be focusing on where we are in those achievement gaps and continue to compare ourselves to ourselves, because we should be setting our own goals. We can flip to the next slide, and I'll run through this really quickly. You can flip past this one, because I already stole my thunder. So how are we doing in comparison to our own goals? And this is, for those who can't see little tiny print, the strategic plan provides benchmarks for each year to actually close those academic achievement gaps. So those measures from students with disabilities to students without disabilities by 3% to 4%, depending on what the category of scoring is from the MCAS. We can flip to the next slide. So top line, this is our ELA and math results for grades 3 through 8. We see that there has been some variability, there is some growth, and we should celebrate that. But overall, that achievement gap is sticky. That achievement gap is not closing in a significant enough way. We can flip to the next slide. We see the same thing in ELA and math for grade 10, which is our other kind of big benchmark year. We do see some achievement gap shifting, in particular, in ELA for grade 10, but for math, we see quite a bit of variability there. And so wanting to understand what's happening, can flip to the next slide. You see the same story in science for grades 5 through 8, which are the key targets within the strategic plan. And then finally, I know Dr. Ford Walker talks about this more in your slide deck around the student growth percentile, so I'm not going to butcher this, but we still see some variability in what those achievements look like. So some things that are directionally in a good direction, and some things that are backsliding a little bit. So then slide, if you can go down one more slide, one more, sorry. So then our second big data point is around attendance. So the headline here was the chronic absenteeism. We've seen that decrease since COVID. However, we see that for students with disabilities, that's flatlined in the last two years, and that gap is actually widening here. And so that's problematic, because as I said earlier, when students aren't in school, they're not learning. And so figuring out what's happening there, I think, is going to be a really essential part of actually impacting those academic achievement goals. We can flip to the next slide. So now let's talk about family experience, which is what you all are expecting me to talk about. So I want to start out with a big thank you. The success of this survey was a group effort. There are huge thanks first and foremost to the many, many, many Arlington families who participated in the survey. A thank you, a huge thank you to the CPAC Survey Subcommittee, some of whom are sitting behind me today, others who I know are listening in, and then to the administration. A huge thank you to Dr. Homan and Ms. Elmer for really helping us push the survey out, which resulted in a significant growth in the response rate. We can flip to the next slide. So why do we think it matters to prioritize family experience? Why should we talk about this anyway when we have all of this other data? What research shows is that when you ask people about their experiences, about how they're feeling, and in particular, when you ask parents of kids in a school system how they are experiencing that school system, that it actually predicts other things that you can be working on. So the purpose of the survey is not to create a report card, it is not to cast judgment on the school district, it is to shine a flashlight on where we believe we can be making a bigger difference that will in turn impact those other essential data points within the strategic plan. Can flip to the next slide. So in particular, parent perception data predicts student results. It provides early warning of what is going to happen, and it can often pinpoint actionable issues. We can flip to the next slide. So enormous growth in response rate. Last, two years ago, we had 136 responses. This year, we had 345 responses. I will note that of those 345, 258 of those respondents provided open-ended responses to questions. So we'll be sharing information about those quantitative responses, but also we've aggregated a lot of those qualitative responses together. We can flip to the next slide. Okay, so who responded to the survey? The top line is everybody. We hit every demographic group, we hit every category of IEPs, 504s, neither. Homeschooling, enrollment in APS, decision to place your child unilaterally in another school, collaborative decision with the school district to make an out-of-district placement. So we actually hit on everything, and we hit on every IEP category. So we saw a much broader group of respondents in this survey, which we're really, really excited about, because I think it provides additional richness to the results and validation. So there are a couple of key themes that I'm going to focus on for the remainder of this time. The first one is communication and collaboration. And here we see very consistent results with what we saw last year, and the, and in particular, we continue to see really strong relationships with specific teachers and staff. So people name who are their trusted people within the school system. There was also a feeling of there being more of an equal partnership in some cases, but that was mostly stagnant. And this is one of, a particular issue around special education, because this is one of the places where parents actually have a protected seat at the table, and the expectation is that they are equal partners in these conversations. So this is a really important data point for us, because it reflects the aspirations of what the special education process is supposed to be. We did see significant communication and collaboration gaps. So this is, we saw 96% of open-ended responses included something about a challenge with communication. And so this is something that we would very much like to be able to dig into with the district as the CPAC, and we shared the full report, and there's more detail on that there. We can flip to the next slide, which is really opportunities, like what, okay, so what do we actually do with this? So we know we have a communication challenge. We think there's a couple of things. So one is more proactive communication. I think one of the things that really jumped out at me is this example of this question to the right, which is APS staff members inform me promptly about things I want to know about. For example, changes in staffing or challenges in the classroom. And we see pretty high variability here in terms of what that experience looks like. And I think notably, we see that as you shift into the secondary environment, starting in Gibbs, that you see increases in challenges in that communication. And so I think there's a significant opportunity to increase that really proactive piece as opposed to the reactive piece, which did seem to get better, which I know has been a policy kind of recommendation in terms of timeliness of responses. We also think that there is a significant opportunity for investment in points of transition with a particular focus on Gibbs. We're excited to hear about the new leadership there, and we believe that there's an opportunity to reset some of the communication expectations in the building. We also think there's an opportunity to actually celebrate wins more. So we have the Arlington Stars Program with the foundation, the Arlington Foundation, and we think that there's an opportunity to actually do something similar, to really celebrate standout actions by educators and staff related to special education and inclusion. And then finally, we'd like to see an emphasis on workshops and trainings for parents and staff, so that there can be collective engagement in creating, co-creating some of the protocols or communication standards, so that parents' voices can actually be in the room. I think that'll increase buy-in and potentially strengthen spot kind of things earlier that might be problematic. And then finally, we really want to make sure that communication tools actually meet accessibility criteria, so that any of the universal design for learning expectations, WUCA criteria are being met across all communication platforms within the public school system. Flip to the next slide. Second theme is around service delivery and progress monitoring. So here we saw some increases in positive experiences with specific supports. We saw an increase in positive responses, in particular, around reading interventions with naming of Orton Gillingham, RAVO as being essential parts of that, as well as counseling and academic supports. There continue to be inconsistent perceptions of IEP and 504 services. So about half of parents said that they thought that what their child was getting in the IEP or 504 met the needs of their student, which is an improvement over last year and actually should be celebrated. But there's uncertainty about whether plans are being followed. So only about 64%, 65% were, felt that the plans that were in place for their child were actually being followed with fidelity, which is a significant challenge. And then finally, we continue to see limited satisfaction with progress monitoring. So how do I actually know if my child is making progress in the classroom with their plan, with their specific skill sets? Can flip to the next slide. So here we also see potential for opportunities. And the first one that I want to emphasize is an expanded understanding of what the actual problem is here. The vast majority of the students whose parents responded to the survey are in the general education classroom, the vast majority of the day. This is not just about service delivery, this is not just about what we think of as the special education priorities of the school system. This is about the entire school system and thinking in different ways about how we meet the needs of these kids every moment of their school day. We are very excited about what's happening with MTSS, the updated D cap, and we really want to see that be successful and want to be supportive of that investment. We see investments from the district, from the school committee, in universal design for learning to ensure scaling with fidelity as being an essential part of what has to happen in order to see MTSS be successful. This would include selection of a new curriculum and tools that meet UDL criteria, as well as training and supports for educators that create their own content to ensure that that also meets UDL standards. So this becomes a particular issue in your secondary classrooms where there isn't a formal, a full curriculum in place, and oftentimes educators are creating their own Google Sheets and decks, and those don't always actually meet the ability, the criteria to like use a screen reader or to manipulate things if you have an executive function challenge. And so thinking about how we can make those experiences more accessible can make, can help us actually move the needle on the academic achievement numbers that we started out the presentation with. We would also like to see a review of special ed services and progress monitoring approaches to ensure that what works is replicated. So here we hear stories about, like so much of this is anecdotal, but you hear stories about a kid making great progress in one school and another kid having a completely different program being administered to them and not seeing the same progress. So being able to look across buildings, across grade levels, across disability types, so that we can see what's working and what's not, stop what's not, and do more of what is. And then finally, we'd like to include caregivers and the IEP goal writing training that we know Arlington is investing in, so that parents are just as prepared as the educational team to understand what makes a good goal in an IEP, so that they can be equal members of that conversation, and so that they can be contributing with confidence. We can flip to the next slide, and I've completely lost track of time, so I apologize. And please, Mr. Thielman, if you can call me out if I am running way behind. So finally, culture inequity. This is, this is a challenging area for us from a special ed perspective and from a disability rights perspective. For student belonging and inclusion for students with disabilities, we only, we saw that 25% of those open-ended responses said that this is an area of concern, especially for neurodivergent students and students with social emotional challenges. And then we also saw a major issue come through in the survey around perceived inequities in access. So this 96% of respondents said that they paid for or received an external evaluation, so an external neuropsych evaluation of some sort. 40% said that they actually contracted with an advocate to navigate the public school system, the special education process, and 13% said that they engaged an attorney. These are expensive things to do, and so we need to think about what's happening that is And so we need to think about what's happening that is both pushing parents to make those choices, those investments, but also considering what's happening with those who cannot afford to make those choices, who is being shut out of this process because of that. If we could flip to the next slide. We once again turn to MTSS as a really important part of resolving some of these cultural challenges. The first domain in MTSS in the new publication from the Massachusetts Department of Education or elementary and secondary education, the first domain of MTSS is school belonging. And so we would like to better understand how the district is prioritizing that belonging and how you all see that playing out as MTSS implementation continues. We'd also like to see trusting relationships with families and inclusion of caregivers be part of that rollout and development of MTSS as this continues to move forward. We know that all of the research shows that initiatives like MTSS are stronger when it, they're built on kind of the shoulders of trusting relationships with caregivers. And so we want to make sure that that's there. Um, and then we also see this as an opportunity because we believe that if MTSS is implemented with fidelity, it can actually positively impact those inequities that we see playing out right now. And then, um, to close us out, um, this was a lot of data. And so I want to remind us that behind every single data point in this presentation is a child, is a neighbor, is a family, is sometimes multiple kids in one family. And the question here isn't whether or not we can close those achievement gaps, whether we can make a difference on our attendance challenges. It's how quickly we choose to act together. We see this as an opportunity for us as the CPAC to be partners, to be collaborators, to be supporters in this change. If we want to see these numbers start to move, this is about strong change management. It's about essential leadership from the school committee and from the administration. And to be more frank, it's about return on investment. We need to be even leveraging even more the expertise in our school buildings, among our teachers, among our staff, um, rather than adding on new layers. We also believe that the emphasis on universal design for learning and making sure that that is part of every aspect of every investment that the school committee is making in the district will be essential. This isn't about ensuring that our instructional approaches, our curricular materials, our communication, our learning models are designed around a strong MTSS model so that we are not spending special education dollars to remedy a general education challenge. We know that there is a structural deficit that is looking, that we're looking at as a district in the near future. We see this as an opportunity to make, to set the groundwork for not having this be an us versus them conversation, not having this be a special education parents versus everybody else in the district conversation, but an opportunity to really come together and make sure that we're seeing all of those boats lift, that we're closing those achievement gaps. And we want to be part of that solution so that all of our students are growing and thriving. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Well, now enough to, uh, questions. Do you want to run the horn? Does anyone want to start? Any questions? Dr. Kelsman?
First, I just wanted to thank you and your data subcommittee. This was really well done and well explained and I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
I just wanted to double check. So this survey was done last, when, when was it done?
Uh, it was administered February through April, I believe, of this past spring.
Okay, so when we're talking about sixth graders, we're talking about last year's sixth graders.
Yes, yes. We're not talking about this year's.
Right, okay. And I appreciated how you folks had some of the questions split into two. And I liked how you showed what was going on.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, that was, that was very nicely done. Anyway, um, I'm still thinking about everything I've heard. The two things, one, I'm wondering if there's any way either from you folks or possibly the special education department in terms of doing a quick temperature check of how communications are going at Gibbs now, this year, already.
Yeah, yeah.
Just because.
We could definitely do that.
We, I mean, that, that's, we've had a major change already.
Yes, yes.
And just to understand if that's, you know, so we're not spending, I mean, we, we still need to work on it. I agree that we need to have more resources put in terms of the transitions to the Gibbs and away from the Gibbs, but that, that's one question.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then finally, uh, I just wanted to point out, we mentioned, I mentioned this last meeting, meeting before, anyway, we're in the middle of the mid-year. You, you have to tell me all the titles, but anyway, we're in the middle of being evaluated in the mid, middle of the cycle as opposed to the start of the cycle.
Yep.
And part of that is a survey and it's an anonymous survey. It comes from Desi, except it comes in these weird, very spam-looking emails.
Says, "Help the Town of Arlington" was the subject line for what I got.
Exactly. At least yours had the, I mean, the one that I had didn't even have the town in it.
Yeah.
Uh, and so I just, that, if you folks, as many people can fill that out, it's good. And just to understand, it isn't actually spam, even though it looks like it.
Yep.
And if you can make sure that the word's getting out.
Yes, and we have been working together to, um, we've been sending that out to our mailing list as well as promoting it on social media. And I know that, uh, that there's been lots of conversation about it.
Yeah, but just that it, it looks so spammy.
Yes, it's a really, it's, yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's all.
It would not pass the phishing rules.
No, exactly. No, that's why I was like, no. So, okay, great.
Yes, yes, we're absolutely promoting that.
Ms. Slickman?
What interests me is that you've gone from 136 respondents to 345.
Yes.
Obviously you've employed strategies to broaden the, uh, the sample. Can you talk about that briefly?
Yeah, um, so I think this is, a significant amount of credit actually goes to Dr. Homan and Ms. Elmer, who really diligently helped us push it out across multiple APS channels. So instead of the, um, CPAC only sending it to our list, we were able to send it through the superintendent's email at least twice. There were dedicated emails that went out to parents of students with IEPs and 504s. So, um, so it was a much more concerted and I think deliberate effort with the administration to make sure that that happened.
The unknown for me is when we, when you start comparing results across the two years, is that you definitely have a different pool of respondents.
Yes.
So my wonder is, and I know that there's no good answer for this, is how the change in the sample is responsible for any of the changes in the outcomes.
Yeah, and I don't, I'm, uh, we can't know that, I would say. I also think this goes back to, from my perspective, what is the core purpose of the survey and the survey results, which is to inspire us to ask better questions, to think about where we can dig deeper, to take maybe some experimental action, to see if, um, a change could happen with a communication protocol, something like that. But I also think that this is where triangulating the data becomes really important. So we, we also dug into the Panorama survey data from last year. And I would say that our survey results are very consistent with what you see in the Panorama survey results as well. So, um, so I think there's, we, we could pick at like how much of a percent difference is, is something and what's, what's reasonable. But I, to me, this isn't an evaluation tool, it's a light shining tool.
Yeah.
And so, um, so I, I hope that, that that kind of variability of sample size and grouping doesn't diminish the, the insights that come out of the report.
No, I don't think it does. But I, but you know, my inner researcher here is, is looking at it and saying, well, there, there, there's a difference in, in the sample.
Yes.
And I'm, that, that really raises a source of curiosity for me. And that I think is really a positive thing that we are, are able to get more folks participating.
I agree.
So that whatever is happening is probably a much, a better reflection of, of, of the overall community than the original one with 136. We're going to be doing the same thing in February this year?
Um, that is the plan. We have a list of updates we'd like to make to the survey based on things that we've learned. But the plan at this point is to do another administration.
Okay, I, I really, very appreciative of the work you're doing to gather voices and present them to us and feel free to come visit us anytime.
We will happily come visit anytime. And I do have to say that, um, it's, the committee this year was phenomenal and the amount of work that went into, in particular, the analysis this year was enormous just because of that high rate of open-ended responses in particular. That that was a, a true labor of love and commitment to the district and the town and our kids.
Yeah, 345 responses with a bunch of open responses.
Yeah, that's a lot, yeah.
That's substantive.
Yes.
Thank you so very much.
Yeah, it's my pleasure.
Ms. Carden or Ms. Gittleson, anyone else? Thank you, that was a very comprehensive presentation. Do you want to say something?
Sure. First of all, um, thank you. It was a team effort and it's really exciting to see how many more responses we have. And that's really helpful to us because the, some of the opportunities you named are excellent points for us to think about and work together on building out. Um, I'm particularly interested in professional development that includes caregivers with teachers. Are there topics, you mentioned the IEP goal writing and I imagine you'll speak with.
We understood that that, that training was already in the, in the works. And so that was one example, yeah.
Yes, and like we do all sorts of PD again because we have new people join. And so that's one topic. Do you have other topics in mind that you thought might be good for us to do some joint?
Yeah, I, I really think that there's, if it's like really special education specific, I've been unrelated to CPAC, have been in conversation with an organization that actually works specifically on the question of communication between district, between staff and parents. And their model is based on the idea that if you, if you train the parents and the education teams together in terms of how to, how to have better communication, um, that you see more of those trusting relationships, you see more, um, progress. And so, um, so would love to see, um, some co-creation as well as some training in that space. And, uh, I'm sure we could come up with some other examples.
I'm sorry, can I, what's the name of that organization?
Uh, you're asking the ADHD person. Can we, can we just?
I don't need it this moment, but if you want to follow, I'm just curious.
Yeah, I'm happy to follow up and share that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And then, uh, I couldn't agree more that the, the, this is all about APS, about all of APS and not just special education and the importance of MTSS. And the work that we're doing with all educators is key to a lot of that. We're sort of in the initial stages of it. Dr. Ford Walker and I were just with three schools yesterday afternoon and finding that, like just the definition of terms and shared language is sort of our first step. But I agree that doing some of that work together and building that understanding together is a great idea. So thank you so much for all the work that all of you have done on this.
It's my pleasure.
It's exciting.
Yeah, and I'll just, uh, name that the full report is also, um, attached to the agenda for tonight's meeting and we hope that you all take a look. Thank you.
Thank you very much, very comprehensive. Next, Dr. Ford Walker.
All right. You're going to hand this to me first, actually, and I will frame a little bit and then I will hand off to Dr. Ford Walker. So give me one second. Nope, I'm going to share this a little differently, hold on. Okay. Mr. Carden, can you, are you seeing my whole screen?
Yes, I am.
Yes, you are. I can't hear you.
Yes, thanks, sorry.
Perfect, thank you. All right, welcome everyone. Dr. Ford Walker's going to do most of the walking through data. I just want to open us up a little bit with a bit of framing and explanation of some of the data that you will see tonight. Just as a reminder, we've already read the vision statement this evening, but this is what we ground all of our work in. We have the focal groups that our friends also mentioned that do include students with IEPs, but also our students who identify as Black, Hispanic, students who identify as LGBTQIA+, who are multilingual learners or who come from low-income households. And we do disaggregate by all of these groups that have academic data in our outcomes reports when we report on our outcomes. We're pulling from a number of different data sources tonight in the data that we're going to share with you. That includes accountability data, MCAS trend data. We're incorporating cohort data new this year. We haven't had the ability to disaggregate things in a way that allows us to track a cohort of students over time, um, but we've developed that capacity. So we are excited to include that this year as well. Um, and then we'll also share some AP and advanced coursework data and some attendance data towards the end. Um, we want to give a quick refresher and recap on what some of the things are that are included in accountability and outcomes data that is shared out by the state. The accountability process and calculations are not just based on MCAS. And it's one of the things I appreciate actually about Massachusetts accountability system is that it includes multiple data sources, some of which get a little more at the student experience and some of the things that are drivers for academic outcomes. And so include, and it also looks at two years at a time. So it includes MCAS, uh, data from the, this year and the prior year. Access, which is the test that we give to our multilingual learners to assess their progress towards learning, uh, English in both years, chronic absenteeism from both years, advanced coursework completion data for the high school from both years, cohort graduation rates, dropout rates and extended engagement rates from both years as well. Those last four are only applied at the high school level. The accountability reports include detailed data for each accountability indicator and we included the reports for all of the schools and the district and the materials that you have for tonight. And it tells what the indicator targets are as well as our points for progress towards those targets. So the state sets, sets targets for us and then our progress towards those targets is what determines what, the points that we get towards accountability. It also includes, uh, assessment participation rates by subgroups and for all students. The accountability percentiles, which is a ranking against other districts in the state, any federal designations that apply and anything that has to do with group performance, group graduation rates or low assessment participation. So this is the point assignment scale. And we get points on each of the things on the accountability, uh, report based on the degree to which we met the target, exceeded the target, improved below, didn't change or declined. And I just want to speak, so this is how we performed this year. We were at 79% meeting or exceeding targets. I'll talk a little bit more also about what qualifies us for meeting or exceeding targets because that can get confusing sometimes when you look at the reports. What's notable here is that from 2024 to 2025, we are measured against ourselves when we look at this measure. So this is not the percentile against the state, this is us against our own targets. And the, the accountability system is designed to look at the performance of our focal groups and other subgroups that the state defines. And so, and it uses, it counts up our points based on how we did, not only for all students, but also for those, uh, target groups. So the, from 2024 to 25, against our own targets, we moved from 74% of the points to 83% of the points. 2024 gets 40% of the weight, uh, 2025 gets 60% of the weight and that gets us to 79% and our rating of meeting or exceeding targets for the 2024, um, 2025 school year. This was our designation as a whole district. This is the, um, meeting or exceeding target is the highest designation that a school district can receive. Um, and then when it comes to what qualifies as exceeding or meeting targets, I wanted to point a few things. Um, and then when it comes to what qualifies as exceeding or meeting targets, um, I wanted to point a few things out here. There are times in the reports where you might look at it and notice that the change was actually a negative change. Like, so we went from, um, whatever this percentage was of meeting and exceeding to this percentage, and maybe it's a minus point five. But it says we exceeded our target. And you might think, why? Because it looks like this number went down. And the reason why in those cases is that there are a couple of different things that the state looks at to determine how we've done against targets. One is that, you know, did, did it go up towards whatever the target is? But where you are relative to other students statewide also matters. So we would be ranked as exceeding a target if the scaled score was in the 90th percentile for all students in that grade band statewide. So if you see a place where the score goes, it looks like it goes down, but we're still qualifying as exceeding targets. It means that that score is up in a range where it can't move very much. And we're in the, because we're in the 90th percentile across the state. So, um, in those instances, that's what that means. If you're within a point five, point of your target, then you also qualify as having met expectations. Um, and then there are a couple of other qualifiers for achievement and whether or not you're considered having met or exceeded the target. So there are places where we got points, but if you look at the detailed list, you might wonder, um, why it's designated that way. A quick reminder that, uh, student growth percentile is, uh, rating against the achievement of everybody else in the state. Um, and then, and the state is always at 50 with the exception of 2021 when it wasn't. Um, and that typical growth is the range between 40 and 59. So what the state will do on the accountability reports is anything below 50, it will say typical growth, low. Anything above 50, it will say typical growth, high, unless you get to 60 where it will say high growth or 80 where it will say very high growth, um, for example. So the state will sort of put lower high next to it regardless. Um, but it's typical growth between the range of 40 to 59. I want to talk a little bit about some school accountability designations and then I'm going to make sure that I'm on the right file because I'm a little concerned I'm on the different file than the one we wanted to present tonight. Um, these are the designations that the school, uh, district earned for each school. In all the places where it says, uh, requiring assistance or intervention, it is because one group of students did not have participation in the MCAS at the level that the state requires in order for us not to have that designation. Uh, this is something that has been stymying and frustrating for the district for a few years now. It tends to be due to opt-outs. At the high school this year, they got that designation because of low participation, um, for students who identify as Hispanic or Latino. And, uh, if there are questions about that, we can discuss those later. At both Pierce and Thompson, it is because of low, of low, but about 94% participation of students with IEPs um, due to families who have the right to keep their child home during MCAS testing days. Um, but what you will notice is that our, we moved fairly significantly for a number of schools um, into having higher progress towards improvement targets, um, and accountability percentiles in 2025, which is a great sign. And we're going to get into the data, but before we do that, I'm going to stop sharing because I need to go over a few of the graphs that you're going to see. I think I'm in the wrong deck. Give me one second. Nope, I am in the right deck. Okay, um. All right, we're just going to go.
Yep, sounds good. Okay. Um, good evening, everyone. I just want to start off by acknowledging that we shared a lot of information, a lot of data. And I will not be going through every single piece of that data. Um, I have decided to, um, highlight particular areas that I think are important to name in the space and also provide a general update around, uh, student performance, third through 12th grade. So just a heads up. And then also I'll mention too, if you have any additional questions, particularly around student performance, something that's not here, something that you're wondering about, you can always feel free to follow up with me and I can help with, uh, any questions that people have. So I'll start off with our grades three through five ELA. Um, so students in grades three through five outperformed the state in ELA. 66% of students in grades three through five were in the meet or exceeded category. And this was an increase by 2% from last year to this year. And also the average SGP of third through fifth grade students was 57.1, which represents a slight decrease of, um, one, which is not significantly.
Statistically significant.
Statistically significant.
The state says if it's three points, within three points, it is not considered statistically significant as a change, so that we've clarified that.
Um, so moving on, the performance of our students in grades three through five over time in ELA has remained consistent over the past few years. When comparing the achievement of APS students to students in Town Manager 12 schools, students in APS ranked five out of 12. And also when comparing the growth of students to students in Town Manager 12 schools, um, for performance on the MCAS, students ranked, APS students ranked six out of 12. Um, the cohort trend data for ELA for grades three through five has remained pretty consistent over three years with little change. In grades three through five in math, APS students outperformed the state again. 65% of students in grades three through five were in the meet or exceeded category. I'm sorry, met or exceeded category. And this was a, this was a slight decrease by 3%. And the average SGP of APS students is higher than the state at 55.8 and marks a decrease as well of one. Performance of students in grades three through five over time in math has remained consistent. And again, when comparing students in APS to students in Town Manager 12 schools, um, as it relates to achievement, students in APS rank seven out of 12. And then, and when comparing growth, eight out of 12. And for the cohort trend data for math, again, it's remained consistent over three years with some slight changes. In science, students in fifth grade outperformed the state in science. Um, this is one of many bright spots this year for us. 79% of fifth grade students are in the met or exceeded category. And this was an increase of 6% from 24 to 25. The performance of students in grade five in science has continued to improve over time. And the number of students in both the exceeding and meeting categories increased by 3%. When comparing to the achievement of students in Town Manager 12 schools, students in APS rank two out of 12. So I'll share now, um, I'll go a little bit further and talk about the APS, uh, focal groups. And we named and identified what the focal groups are, um, but we'll talk a little bit more about, um, performance. So the number of students with IEPs in grades three through five at the meeting or exceeding category in ELA, in ELA increased by 4%. The average SGP for students with IEPs was 54.5, which reflects an increase of six from 24 to 25. Um, and here you can see that the gap between APS students with IEPs and APS students without IEPs remains.
I'm going to explain this graph because one of the things I was looking for a moment ago was the explanation of, of these data, which is in your NOVIS materials in the slide deck that's there. Um, but this gap graph is different from the ones that we've shared in the past. And I just want to explain what it's doing for just a second. Um, at zero, what this does is it sets the all students measure at zero so that you can see the distance between all students and your target group, all students and your non-target group, and the distance between your target group and your non-target group. So it is showing the full gap. That's that number there and the movement of that gap over time. I do want to also name that 2021 is an anomalous school year. One of the things you might notice in some of the other graphs is that that's the only year that the state's SGP is not at 50. Um, it, I would suggest, and we can't actually take that out of the graphs in, uh, the platform. We've shared this with the vendor. Uh, but that folks not look at 2021 because that was a strange testing year. Students got a different test. Um, they only got portions of the test and the state moved the SGP baseline, um, which makes SGP a little hard to look at. But for achievement, what these gap graphs are doing is that you should, you shouldn't look at the line here as the achievement line for students with IEPs. It is literally showing distance between the target group and the zero baseline and the non-target group and the zero baseline and their distance from one another. Um, the actual achievement line for students with IEPs would look a little bit different from that left all by itself. So I just wanted to explain what these graphs are because we're going to show a lot of them tonight. Go ahead.
Chrissy, go ahead.
So I'm just trying to make sure I understand. So first, these graphs like this are for student growth?
This is, no, all of these are achievement.
Okay.
So this is achievement too.
Cause it says average SGP next to it. So, okay, so.
This is, this is SGP right here.
Okay.
The two graphs are both meeting and exceeding. That's achievement. And then this is achievement right here. But both graphs are percent meeting, exceeding.
Okay.
Okay.
So it's setting, when you say you're setting it at, I'm trying to understand what the zero is.
Yep. That, that is the all, that's all students. So whatever the all students achievement was, that's zero.
So, and the all students isn't actually all student, or the all students is showing the, is that? And then the all, without disabilities is the little bit above and the with disabilities.
Correct.
And we want to see them. Okay.
Yep.
Okay, now I understand. Thank you.
Great. So 9% of multilingual learner students in grades three through five were at meeting or exceeding, which represents a 11% decrease from 24 to 25. Um, I'll talk a little bit more as we move on about the performance of our, uh, multilingual learner students. Um, but that is one of the areas that, um, I'll talk a little bit more about what our next steps are for supporting our, our learners.
Nope, sorry.
The average SGP of multilingual learner students was 46.4, which also reflects a decrease of three. So moving on to the number of students in grades through five in the low-income category at meeting or exceeding in ELA increased by 2%. In ELA, the number of Black and Hispanic or Latinx students in grades three to five at meeting or exceeding increased by 4% from 24 to 25. When comparing Black and Hispanic or Latinx students in Arlington to Black and Hispanic or Latinx students in the state, there was a slight increase in performance from 24 to 25.
This is the only focal group that you will not get a gap graph for because we cannot combine the categories for the gap graphs. So here we do a comparison with the state. It's not great as a comparison, but it's because of what we're able to gather from the system. If you wanted the gap graphs for those groups, we just have to split them out by different racial, ethnic groups. But then the N gets kind of small and so they can be a little volatile. So that's why we've done it this way.
The gap between APS students with IEPs in grades three to five and students without IEPs in APS closed slightly. The average SGP was 45.9, which reflects an increase of 12 from 24 to 25. Um, 12% of students with IEPs in grades three to five were at meeting or exceeding in math, which represents neither an increase or decrease. It was, um, pretty flat, just similar to what CPAC mentioned earlier. In math, the number of multilingual learner students in grades three to five meeting or exceeding in math decreased by 3%. And the average SGP of multilingual learner students in math was 64.4, which reflects an increase of 15. The number of students in the low-income category in grades three to five meeting or exceeding in math increased by 2%. In math, the number of Black and Hispanic or Latinx students in grades three to five at meeting or exceeding increased by 5%. And in science, 51% of students with IEPs in grade five were at meeting or exceeding, which represents an increase of 8% from 24 to 25. And I just want to mention that the gap between APS students with IEPs in grades five and APS students without IEPs closed slightly. In science, fifth grade students in the low-income category meeting or exceeding increased by 7%. And we continue to see a decline in our MLL population of students' performance in the meeting or exceeding category in particular. Our multilingual learner students in grades five, excuse me, in grade five, meeting or exceeding in science decreased by 11%. The gap between fifth grade multilingual learner students and other APS fifth graders increased. The number of Black and Hispanic or Latinx students in grade five at meeting or exceeding increased by 6%. So I'll, um, start to talk a little bit about the cohort trend data. And, um, Dr. Homan mentioned, um, this being a new graph.
You want me to explain it?
Yeah.
So.
Since you don't have it.
Yeah, I want to explain the difference between these data are year-over-year data, which means they're showing different students in the testing group each year because it's holding the test grade constant. So for example, the third through fifth graders in 2025 were different than the third to fifth graders in 2024 were different than the third to fifth graders in 2023 because they matriculate. Um, or some students come or leave, and this includes all of the kids in that grade level, in that band of grade levels in that year. And so you're comparing a different group of kids with a different group of kids with a different group of kids. What you lose, what's valuable about data like that is that you can see systemic change over a long period of time. More, sort of gradually, but also a little more clearly. It tells you more about how the system's doing. If you want to understand better though, the student's experience and whether that is improving at the student level, you want to look at cohort data. So what cohort data will show is all of the kids who are currently in our system and have been over the span of time that you designate. So this does not include all of our students. That's important to note because cohort data holds a cohort constant. But what you can sometimes see in cohort data more clearly is an immediate impact. If you do an intervention with a specific group of students and you want to know whether there was an impact on that, you usually can't draw a straight line when you're talking about schools. But it's a little easier to sometimes see when something's moving earlier if you look at cohort data because you're going to have a more immediate impact at the student level. And the year-over-year data can hide cohort effects. Um, so if you do something at the student level that's a significant shift, you're more likely to see it in the cohort data first. And so we want to use cohort data alongside year-over-year because that's going to give us a, an easier way to triangulate, to ask questions about the data. And so we've been looking for ways to represent cohort-based data. But this is not going to match what you see at the state level because the state is looking fairly holistically and systemically, and they're going to look at year-over-year data. So what these graphs show is a solid line, which will be all students in whatever class we're talking about. So this, this is the current sixth grade class. This is the class of 2032. They would have been in fifth grade when they took the test. This is their fifth grade testing year here, 24, 25. This is their fourth grade testing year. And this is their third grade testing year. And so this is showing you those three testing years for that group of kids. And it's also disaggregating the pink line, students with IEPs. The orange line is multilingual learners. The purple line is students who identify as Black or Hispanic. And the green line is students who are low-income. So you can see the gap for the cohort here as well. Any questions about cohort data? Yep.
Yeah, but Ms. Ags at first, then Dr. Allison.
Is it, like, I'm just sort of scrolling through. Is it somewhere, is it here for every, like, sixth, fifth?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. But we've got them all in here. If we didn't, we have that somewhere and I can go find it. Yep. It should be in the deck that's in NOVIS.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's right. Okay. A lot of slides. Thank you.
Yep.
Is it possible to find out how many people are in these cohorts?
Yes. I would have to go find, how many are still included once you account for the fact that this is only tracking over time? Yeah, yes. I can find that out, but I don't have it right now.
Okay. So for ELA, our current sixth-grade cohort data shows an increase in the percentage of students performing at meeting and exceeding for all students from twenty-four to twenty-five. And the same trend is true for students with IEPs. For ELA, for our current fifth-grade cohort, the data shows an increase in the percentage of students performing at meeting and exceeding. And this is for all students. And again, the same trend is true for students with IEPs and students in the low-income category. For math, our current sixth-grade cohort data shows a slight decrease in the percentage of students performing at meeting and exceeding for all students. There was a small increase in the percentage of students performing in these categories for APS multilingual learners.
Sorry.
And I'm going to shift now to middle school.
Excuse me, current sixth grade means that they were in sixth grade when they took the test?
No, fifth grade. Current sixth.
Okay.
Means that.
They were in fifth.
They were in fifth, yes.
Okay.
So for grade six through eight ELA, we continue to see the trend of students in APS outperforming the state in ELA in particular. Students in grades six through eight outperformed the state. Seventy-six percent of students scored at meeting or exceeding, which reflects an increase of six percent from twenty-four to twenty-five. The median SGP was sixty-two point nine, which reflects an increase of six from twenty-four to twenty-five. Performance of students in grades six through eight over time in ELA has remained relatively consistent over the past few years. When comparing the achievement of students in APS to students in Town Manager twelve schools, students in APS ranked one out of twelve. When comparing the growth of students to students in Town Manager twelve schools, students in APS also ranked one out of twelve. And again, in terms of the cohort trend data, over time, it's been pretty stable, pretty stable outcomes overall for the cohorts over the past four years in ELA. And we did, there was a slight decline that we noticed with our students in the class of two thousand and thirty-one. In math, overall, students in grades six through eight outperformed the state in math as well. Seventy-four percent of students scored at meeting or exceeding, which reflects an increase of two percent. Performance of students in grades six through eight over time in math remained consistent from twenty-four to twenty-five. And again, when comparing the achievement of our students to students in Town Manager twelve schools, students in APS ranked five out of twelve. And when comparing the growth of students, students in APS ranked four out of twelve. Eighth-grade students outperformed the state in science. Seventy-five percent of students scored at meeting or exceeding.
Sorry.
Which reflects an increase of two percent from twenty-four to twenty-five. When comparing the achievement of students to students, APS students to students in Town Manager twelve schools, APS ranked three out of twelve. This is particularly with science. That's grade eight science. Seventy-nine percent of students scored at meeting or exceeding. This was with civics, this was the first year of our civics exam. There's not a state data comparison available at this time. And let's keep going.
Okay.
So I'll talk a little bit about focal groups at grade six through eight and focal group performance. The number of students with IEPs in grade six through eight at meeting or exceeding in ELA increased by seven percent. And also, the average SGP of students with IEPs was fifty-five point five, which reflects an increase of five. And here you can see that the gap between APS students with IEPs and APS students without IEPs remains, and it did decrease slightly. The number of multilingual learners in grades six through eight at meeting or exceeding in ELA increased by six percent. This was a bright spot for our multilingual learners. The average SGP of multilingual learners was sixty-five point five, which reflects an increase of sixteen from twenty-four to twenty-five, so that's a significant jump. The number of students in the low-income category in grades six through eight meeting or exceeding in ELA increased by four percent. And the average SGP of students in the low-income category in ELA was fifty-five point two, which reflects an increase of six from twenty-four to twenty-five. In ELA, the number of Black and Hispanic or Latinx students in grades six through eight at meeting or exceeding increased by eight percent. The number of students with IEPs in grades six through eight at meeting or exceeding in math increased by two percent. The math, excuse me, in math, the number of multilingual learner students in grades six through eight meeting or exceeding in math decreased by six percent. Also in math, the number of Black and Hispanic or Latinx students in grades six through eight at meeting or exceeding increased by one percent. Multilingual learner students in grade eight at the meeting or exceeding category in science increased by twelve percent. And in science, eighth-grade students in the low-income category at meeting or exceeding increased by nine percent. And then finally, there was also another jump for Black and Hispanic or Latinx students, particularly in science, and that was an increase of seventeen percent. I just want to mention too that Black and Hispanic or Latinx students are outperforming the state as well. I mentioned this before, but again, I'll just say this again, this is the first year of the civics exam. Civics does not have state data comparison available at this time, and gap data does not exist for the civics exam yet. And also, there's no two thousand and twenty-four data available. Thirty-eight percent of students scored at meeting or exceeding in eighth grade, and twenty percent of multilingual learner students scored at meeting or exceeding. Forty-five percent of students in the low-income category scored at meeting or exceeding, and fifty-eight percent of Black and Hispanic or Latinx students scored at meeting or exceeding. For ELA, our current sixth-grade cohort data shows an increase in the percentage of students performing at meeting and exceeding. This is for students in the low-income category and students with IEPs. Our current seventh-grade cohort data shows an increase in the percentage of students performing at meeting and exceeding for all groups of students, except students in the low-income category. And our current eighth-grade cohort data shows an increase in the percentage of students performing at meeting and exceeding for all groups of students.
I want to note here that, you know, we get a lot of questions sometimes about what does it mean to close an achievement gap? What does it look like? And in the data, this line right here shows what we hope it will look like, where all students are improving and a target group, a focal group, is improving at a rate that's faster. And so that will, over time, close or eliminate that gap. And you can see that in our middle school data a little more clearly than you can in some of the other places. And so I just want to name that. We also have some gap closure here for low, for low-income. That's pretty significant over four years from twenty-eight percent to forty-three percent in middle school ELA. And then this, even though it sort of swoops for this cohort, they've had some down years and up years, that gap gets narrower over time for the cohort of students who are, who have been with us for an extended period of time and therefore who we've had the ability to influence the student experience for over multiple years. And so when we look at the cohort, sometimes you can start to see what the trend is that's impacting then the year-over-year achievement because that will show slower in the year-over-year achievement.
Thank you. Okay, high school performance. Eighty-one percent of students in grade ten met or exceeded. This didn't represent an increase or decrease from twenty-four to twenty-five. This was pretty flat, consistent from year to year. The number of students in grade ten performing in the meeting exceeding category is greater than the state. When comparing the achievement of our students to students in Town Manager twelve schools, APS was four out of twelve. And also when comparing the growth of students, the growth of students in APS was ten out of twelve. And this is particularly for grade ten ELA. So for our cohort trend data here, improving, this shows that we are improving and that there are stable outcomes overall for all cohorts over the past four years. Strong improvement trajectory for incoming ninth-grade class over the past several years. And also, this includes a strong historical testing year for the full cohort in eighth-grade ELA.
That's the purple line, is our ninth graders, which we included. They're at the high school, but they didn't test in high school. So they're on the graph because they're in the high school.
Students in grade ten outperformed the state in math. Eighty-one percent of students scored at meeting or exceeding. In math, when comparing the achievement of our students to students in Town Manager twelve schools, APS was four out of twelve for achievement, and then for growth, four out of twelve as well. There are improving outcomes overall for our, all cohorts over the past four years. And there is strong improvement trajectory for incoming ninth-grade class as well. For grade ten science, we continue to experience, I would say, great success in science. Our tenth graders have high achievement for APS students in science. In tenth grade, students outperformed the state. Eighty-three percent of students scored at meeting or exceeding, which reflects an increase of eight percent. And again, when comparison to the Town Manager twelve schools, APS was five out of twelve specifically for achievement. And for our focal groups in our high school. For students with IEPs at grade ten in math, the number of students with IEPs at meeting or exceeding increased by seven percent. The average SGP for students with IEPs was forty-one point three, which does reflect a decrease of twelve from twenty-four to twenty-five. In math, the number of grade-ten students in the low-income category at meeting or exceeding increased by two percent. Performance of students with IEPs in grade ten in ELA increased slightly. Grade-ten Black and Hispanic or Latinx students in ELA increased slightly as well. And in ELA, students in the low-income category in grade-ten at meeting or exceeding increased by fifteen percent. In science, students with IEPs in grade-ten at meeting or exceeding increased by six percent. And also in science, Black and Hispanic or Latinx students in grade-ten at meeting or exceeding was fifty-one percent. And APS Black and Hispanic or Latinx students in grade-ten also outperformed the state. In science, students in the low-income category in grade-ten at meeting or exceeding was fifty-one percent. For ELA, our current ninth-grade cohort data shows an increase in the percentage of students performing at meeting and exceeding for all groups of students, except students in the low-income category. For ELA, our current tenth-grade cohort data shows an increase in the percentage of students performing at meeting and exceeding. And for ELA, our current eleventh-grade cohort data shows a slight decrease in the percentage of students performing at meeting and exceeding. For ELA, our current senior cohort continues to show an increase in the percentage of students performing at meeting and exceeding for all groups. And for math, our current ninth-grade cohort data shows an increase in the percentage of students performing at meeting and exceeding for all students, except Black and Hispanic or Latinx students, where the performance had no change from twenty-four to twenty-five. And again, that was in math, for ninth grade. Our current tenth-grade cohort data shows a slight decrease in the percentage of students performing at meeting and exceeding for all groups of students, except students with IEPs, where the performance slightly decreased. Our current eleventh-grade cohort data shows a slight increase in the percentage of students performing at meeting and exceeding. And our current senior cohort data continues to show an increase in the percentage of students performing at meeting and exceeding.
Okay, I'm going to talk about advanced coursework a little bit. So we have some other data that we can look at when it comes to advanced coursework that I'll show in a minute, but it's newer to us, so we don't have as many trend rates. I will point out that we have improvements in the number of students who are accessing advanced coursework across the board with the exception of our students who identify as Hispanic or Latino. Two-point-nine percent increase for all students, a five-point-one percent increase for our low-income students, and eleven percent increase for our students with disabilities when it comes to accessing advanced coursework. I think a major credit goes for this, goes to some of the work that we have done to improve access to higher-level coursework for our students with IEPs at the high school in particular, but also the trajectory for those students shifts when we adjust how we're thinking about leveling and access to advanced coursework at the middle level as well. So that is paying off, and we have more students accessing advanced coursework as a result. And I want to talk a little bit about exactly why this can matter for students, particularly students who are interested in pursuing college. When it comes to enrolling in post-secondary, and that is whatever version of post-secondary a student might want to enroll in, whether it's a couple of years at a community college or at a four-year college or out of state, it doesn't matter. But enrollment in post-secondary of any kind is predicted to some extent by whether or not they participate in any advanced coursework in high school. If they complete one AP course, the percent likelihood, or the enrollment rate generally is around the eighty percent mark. This, I'm showing two sets of years, one pre-pandemic, one post-pandemic. And it shows the percent of students who are enrolled in post-secondary from our graduates who previously did not complete an AP course, completed one AP course, or completed two-plus AP courses. And some of the things that the state credits this to is it just, it can build confidence to take a college-level course when you're still in high school with all the supports that a high school can still offer. And it can be really predictive of whether or not a student will pursue post-secondary education of any kind if they have taken advanced coursework of some kind. If they take, and this is also counting any advanced coursework, it's not just AP classes. AP classes is one type of advanced coursework. But the state's looking at, did they take honors coursework? Did they take other classes that are considered advanced coursework or not? And their taking of any other sort of honors coursework is predictive then of whether they'll take an AP class. So we're trying to make sure that students who want the challenge can have it, that that's an informed choice, we're working on that part now. But that it's not an obstacle if you have a disability or need some services or have additional things going on for you. We still want you to be able to access it, it's just a matter of how we design a program that will allow you to do that. This is showing twenty-three, twenty-four, which is a little bit ago. So we anticipate watching some of this move over the next few years. But this right here, this graph, is a newer one in our platform, and it shows the number of students enrolled this year, two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six, in advanced coursework at the high school. So this is the number of students and then the percent of students who are currently enrolled in an AP or honors class, at least one at the high school that is designated that way in our system. And so what you'll notice is that we have a lot of students, a vast, vast majority, who are enrolled in at least one class in at least one subject area at every single grade level at the high school, which is encouraging because we know that that's building their confidence. We know that they're challenging themselves in the areas and subject areas that they have interest in doing so. I think we also want to make sure that they're, that we're promoting that and giving kids encouragement in a way that is productive for their mental health and is not creating a pressure cooker of a high school. We don't want to do that, but we do want to make sure that students who want the opportunity have the opportunity. And we're seeing that that is happening because we have more students who may not have accessed courses like that in the past, doing so, which is great. And I'll talk a little bit about student attendance as well. We saw improvements, a reminder that in this case, negative numbers in the change column is a good thing. In our non-high school grades, we saw really significant improvements in chronic absenteeism in school attendance. For all students, we saw an improvement of one-point-two percent. For our multilingual learners of two-point-four, our low-income students of four percent, students with disabilities of two percent met and exceeded targets or improved for all groups, with the exception of students who are Black or African-American, where we saw an increase in chronic absenteeism of point-six percent. And then for high school, we did not have the same trend. But this is one of those places where you might notice that just even though there was an increase in chronic absenteeism, it still says that AHS for all students exceeded the target. This is one of the examples of those times where the number doesn't necessarily match up with how the state's giving us a designation, and that's because of the percentile we're in relative to the rest of the state. So yes, there was a change, it was less than two points. The state would say it's not statistically significant, and you're in the ninetieth percentile, therefore you've exceeded your target, even though chronic absenteeism went up. It's a little counterintuitive, but that's why that looks that way. We do have some areas to pay attention to, particularly when it comes to attendance for our low-income students at high school, students with disabilities at high school, and our Black, African-American, Hispanic, Latino students at the high school when it comes to attendance. So those will be things to look at this year. So those will be things to look at this year. We can watch student, school attendance trends as well in our platforms over the course of the year. And one of the things that we are, that I'll note, and I just want to put a caveat on this graph here. We can't really manipulate it to only show us two years at a time. It looks like we are crushing it with attendance so far this year, and it's still fall. So we have not gotten to this part of the school year. The graphs on the left show the full school year. The graphs on the right show three school years in a row. So pay no attention to the large swing up. We're really glad everybody's coming to school so far this year, that's fantastic. But we also know people are going to get the flu, and we don't necessarily want them to bring it to school. But this is flu season right here in the middle, right? That's your January bugs rolling around. And then you see attendance generally improve pretty significantly over the course of the rest of the school year. For all students, you see a pretty tight group. They stay together generally, and you see some of those trends will even themselves out. There'll be some shifts at certain schools, and so those are things that we want to pay attention to and ask questions about and think about, where do we see some significant success? But when you start looking at focal groups, you'll notice bigger shifts and swings. And this is where I'd say it is definitely worth taking a look at attendance for students with IEPs at Arlington High School and what the factors are that are impacting, challenging school attendance. And I think that's something that we'll be digging into this year for sure because of the variability you might see in a focal group when it comes to the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five attendance year and some of the data trends that we've noticed. You just see a wider range, the groups don't stick together quite as tightly in the subgroups, and this is true for all of them. So for our ML students, one of the things that I will note is that right around, right around winter, things got very unpredictable last year for our multilingual learners. And I think there are a number of reasons potentially why, but we're going to have to dig into them before we can steadfastly say what was going on there. And then we also have some of the attendance trends for our students who are black or Hispanic. And I will turn it over to Dr. Ford Walker to talk about takeaways.
Got it, thank you. So some of our major takeaways. APS is among only thirteen other school districts in Massachusetts who have met or exceeded pre-pandemic achievement levels. And I just want to pause for a moment and say hats off to our incredible teams in our schools, our teachers, our leaders, our staff, everyone who is showing up every day, working with our students and our kids and our families and making sure that they're getting what they need. Just an incredible job to everyone, hats off and congratulations to APS as a whole. Also, another takeaway is that APS students demonstrated high growth in both ELA and math, in grades three through eight in particular. Oh, and a shout out to the students as well, I'm sorry, I forgot, the million people, our little people. APS defied the state trend in ELA. APS outperformed the state in many areas. And also another, I would say, bright spot among many is student performance in science. And Dallin Elementary. Dallin Elementary was recognized as a twenty-twenty-five Massachusetts School of Recognition by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. This is an honor awarded to only fifty-five schools across Massachusetts every year. Dallin is being recognized for exceptional student growth and student achievement. And I just want to pause and say congratulations to the staff, students, and families of Dallin, and to Principal Thad Dingman, and Assistant Principal Sam Karusis, and the leadership team at Dallin for your outstanding efforts and this recognition. I believe they'll probably be participating in some sort of ceremony in the spring. So just thinking about over time, what's happened and what's currently taking place and what the district is currently working on and has been working on. Thinking about all of those things, we wanted to just kind of lift some of that up and share what that is because we think that the results are a direct result of some of these efforts in addition to some things that aren't here, right? This is not an inclusive list. But we just wanted to name and highlight some things that have been really intentional. And we believe that we're seeing, part of the success that we're seeing is due to this, not all of the excessive course, success. So the shift to science of reading, full implementation of a new ELA curriculum across K to five, intentional. Also, along with that shift, I should mention there was a large commitment to professional development for educators and leaders that went along with that. And we're still committed to professional development as it relates to the new curriculum rollout. Also, there was an intentional focus, particularly at the secondary level, on high-leverage instructional strategies to build continuity across learning communities, strengthen core practices, and deepen instructional pedagogy. Also, we provided more opportunities for students to engage and challenge by choice and therefore demonstrating student agency, more alignment of curriculum across departments. We are seeing gaps close as a result of that alignment. Also, the work of our instructional leadership teams. Their work is more aligned to school quality plan goals and implementation and having more of a hands-on approach to leading the instructional work of schools. A focus on student discourse, prioritizing engagement with families, and I should also say deepening that engagement with families. A more hands-on integrated approach as it relates to science instruction. Our Director of Science has really been intentional about having a heavy focus on phenomena-based and task-based learning that feels more applicable to students. It's been very hands-on and engaging in tasks, and we believe students are responding to this. Intentionality around embedding science and social studies into ELA. The directors and departments and teams have been working across departments in order to make sure our content was more aligned to our new ELA curriculum. Also, building alignment across disciplines, also across schools, across classrooms, and across the district. Being more intentional about valuing educators. So our educators are in a new contract. At our presentation yesterday, some educators reminded us of that, that the new contract is great, it feels great for folks. And also APS and Arlington Educators Association have been intentional about using a values-based approach to negotiations and working together. Explicit time for leader professional development and planning. So our school leaders, assistant principals, directors, special ed coordinators are together in one room, engaging in professional learning together. Also, last year, we reintroduced instructional rounds. So we experienced more success when we created more flexible systems and when we focused on adult systems. There are a few areas that we will continue to work on and prioritize. Some of that includes the work of our, the performance of our focal groups and what's happening with our focal groups and making sure that we're targeting supports as needed. Dr. Homan mentioned some of the challenges, or alluded to some of the challenges that some of our students might be experiencing and engaging in, and those are very real. And so making sure that we're partnering with families and community organizations and also the family and community engagement department and all the other departments just to make sure that we're lifting up those concerns, but also addressing them so that our students are getting what they need is our goal. Also, we're going to continue to look at what's happening in math at elementary level. I think last year, and also right now, we've been intentional about looking at and talking about secondary, and also we will expand that conversation to elementary. We've already committed ourselves to MTSS and making sure that we have an MTSS plan, which includes the APS D cap. And also, Dr. Homan mentioned that we are, we went to three schools yesterday. We didn't, we went to one school and those three schools were in one location. But it's been a great experience for us because we've been able to not just talk about MTSS and really make sure that folks are understanding what it is, but I think we've been able to tap into our own professional development, co-facilitator experience, which has been great. And also, we are committed to the APS strategic plan and everything that's been outlined in the plan in terms of what we need to prioritize and do. And so we're just making sure that our efforts are centered around the strategic plan. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, that was very detailed and comprehensive. I'm going to open it up for questions, comments.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Ford Walker, for all of this. I'm curious, so you had showed the ML scores and the decline. And then I was, when you showed that, I was like, oh, well, let's see what the focal groups are doing. But we're also sort of, we're seeing a decline there as well. And then I didn't see anything sort of in the things to work on other than just sort of the broad focal group piece there. So essentially, because you have the cohort piece, those are MLs that have been here for at least three years. So I guess could one of you speak to what might be happening here? I feel like we reduced some ML teachers last year, did we? I guess, I don't know, one of them became a EL, the coach for, anyway. You seem like you're, you have some thoughts.
I can start us off. So there are a number of things happening, I would say, for our multilingual learners and also for students in general. I think this could be a challenging time for many people for many different reasons. And I think that one of the ways in which those challenges kind of presented themselves this year was the instability that some of our families are experiencing around housing fear, sustainability in terms of, I should say, safety. And just all of that showed up in different ways in our classrooms. In addition to that, there were gaps in some foundational literacy skills that we found that some of our ML learners had. And part of that was due to lingering pandemic effects, but also part of that was due to exposure, the level of exposure that some of our students had to disrupted schooling. And so all of those factors kind of showed up. And I will also say, we are still figuring out what the full picture is in terms of the performance of multilingual learners. And we have some pieces that I just mentioned, but also we want to make sure that we have all of the information, and we're not there yet in terms of having it all identified.
The profile of languages represented in that group has also shifted over time, which means that the countries they're coming from are shifting over time. And so that could play a role, and we haven't disaggregated by all of that yet. That could be a factor, particularly in some of the things that Dr. Ford Walker just mentioned. We also had a decrease in the testing population for MLs from twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-five that was pretty significant if you consider that it had been an increasing group in Arlington over the past several years. And that decline was about twenty-five students, which is not an insignificant percentage of that group for us. So there's, I think there's lots of forces going on there that we need to sort of better understand and tease out.
So what I'm hearing from you sounds like sort of different students, right? If you're saying that's different languages or different populations or interrupted schooling. But even if I look at the cohort trends, which, if I'm understanding them correctly, are the same group of students. These students were here in twenty-twenty-two, and they were here in twenty-twenty-three, and they were here in twenty-twenty-four. And so their score, so I'm just, I'm on class of twenty-thirty-two, current sixth grade, ELA. Their scores improved from twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four, and then declined. Now, you know, I realize there's some fluctuation there, but these are students who have been exposed to English and in our ML program for three years. So I just, there's that group as opposed to those that are coming and going, which I appreciate and totally understand that where those scores might be affected by that.
Yeah, I'll just also mention too, and I haven't mentioned this yet, you're looking at current sixth graders. Is that what you're looking at?
Well, I don't know which, I don't know what deck I'm in, I'm slide forty-four.
But it asked twenty thirty-two?
Yes.
Yeah, so also, I will say too, that we are still very much working on supporting our ML learners with accessing our EL curriculum. And that has provided some level of disjointness, right? In terms of when do our educators come into the classroom to support versus pulling out? The expectation is that our students are there for tier-one instruction. Our students who have IEPs and students who are MLL learners. And coaches and teachers and directors are still working on how to make sure that that is a time where students are getting exactly what they need and access to the curriculum. So I would say probably too, and again, I need to take a little bit more time and kind of figure this out with the team and look at the data a little bit more specifically. But I think that this is, part of this is the impact of the new curriculum. It's showing up in a not, showing up in a not as positive way as we think it, as we would want it to be at this point in time.
Thank you.
Doctor Allison Impi.
I appreciate Ms. Exton's point, I think that it's a good one. I'm, so one, okay, I can't find this slide now. But on the absenteeism stuff, I just wanted to point out that although the, so first, I think we should be decreasing the numbers and everything, but that the numbers for black and Latino increased by the same percent, not percentiles, but percent, as did the white population below. It's just the weight started from a lower baseline and went up a bit. It went from seven to eight point five, whereas the black and Latino went from thirteen something to sixteen something. But if you do the math, it's actually by the same percent, exactly. And a lot of them were going up by that much, and I don't know why that is. But it was interesting, it's actually that consistent across, and across all platforms. The only ones who didn't were the low-income students, and I thought that was interesting, that they pretty much stayed flat. And so something that we did last year, I think, for those students made a difference. So that's one thing. The other is just, I like the cohort stuff. I wish it showed that we were making more of a difference for more of our students than it does. I hope it does in the future. And then finally, I always look at these graphs and wonder, we're talking about trying to decrease gaps, but I'm also wondering, should we be trying to move kids out of not meeting into partially meeting? You know, I feel like it'd be better to see a big gray bar than, a big, you know, a little bit bigger gray bar than a big gray bar with a red bar tail. And we never really talk about that, and I don't know if that means doing something different. It feels like it'd be more focused on certain students and you'd be able to identify those, but those are my comments.
Yeah, it is worth noting that particularly with our focal groups, the high school level, that those red bars are a lot smaller than they were the previous year. And so to your point, that there's a demonstration of a, this year, in this year's result of a really positive trajectory. And that if we keep a lot of that work up, we're going to move students who are in the not meeting to being closer to meeting, and if we keep going, up into that meeting and exceeding category, which is a positive trend. So yeah, it's worth also looking at the bottom and understanding how many were moving into a new category. And also worth looking at scaled scores, we didn't present that as much. But when that scaled score average goes up, you're also seeing, even if you're still within the same meeting exceeding range, you're seeing the potential for success in future years and for that to continue to potentially bump up into another category.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Exton.
Thank you. For one thing, I think you buried the lead when you talked about thirteen districts have recovered and demonstrated test scores above their pre-pandemic levels. Majority of those districts had testing populations less than one hundred. So we were comparing ourselves to a bunch of tiny districts. We were the largest district in the state. We were the largest district in the state to achieve this by a considerable measure. Which is why the commissioner came to Arlington. It wasn't a big trip. Commissioner came to Arlington to the Addison School to announce this in Arlington because Arlington was the outstanding district that they chose for announcing the test scores. So that's the context we're in. My, I have a bias from having looked at this, and the growth numbers are very significant. And when I take a look at growth numbers, yeah, I'm, I'm fixated right now on the sixth to eighth grade E L A, M L scores. I don't know if the definition of an M L has changed since we talked about limited English proficiency. Do they exit now?
They moved it, level four is now, yeah. How well do you know that, or do you need to call Carla? They adjusted at what point you are supposed to exit a student last year, but for this year. And so, well, no, it was for last year. It was for last year. And that means that fewer students are designated as M Ls. And this could play a really significant role, by the way, in these outcomes. Because if it's, students are exited from service at an earlier time in their M L development now, which means that the students who are designated as M Ls are going to be at earlier levels of language learning, which means the students identified as M Ls in this data have not developed as much English as the students the prior year who were designated as multilingual learners.
Because we have absolutely no control over how much English a student, or, or anything a student knows the first day of school, the walk in the door. The measure for us really is how much have we facilitated growth in a 65.5% average S G P, which is a measure of central tendency on top of a measure of central tendencies extraordinarily high. And the, the one thing that I, I really view as a caution in terms of reading the data is that this year we had 9% of our M Ls meeting a proficiency in English. So I guess they're sort of not M Ls anymore. They're proficient in academic English, at least as far as the M C A S is concerned.
At 9%.
And, and that's usually an exit criteria from, from M L status, or at least it was from L W P status. If a kid hit proficient on the M C A S, thank you, that's nice, you're now a regular kid. You're, you're now a former limited English proficient student. So this is a very, very difficult section of the presentation to, to note. And just by virtue of that very high growth score among that cohort, I think we're being very successful. The other thing I just want to mention is that the change in English curriculum, the fact that we're going to science of reading. We're looking forward to compounding the benefits of this as students who have multiple years within the curriculum. And one thing that I've always understood was that there's usually an implementation dip when you're swapping curriculum, especially one that's such, so significant. So that as this curriculum is being implemented, there are going to be unexpected dips in your scoring based on the fact that the students are now being swapped out and exposed to something different. So that's not really something to be unexpected. I, I think that in general, the, the performance of the district has been high. The growth, which is what I view as important, is high.
Sorry.
Did they win?
And, and I think that, that the teachers and folks who are working with our students need to be commended for the tremendous growth that they've seen over the past year. Thank you.
We agree.
Thank you. Ms. Gilson?
I don't have anything.
Okay, Mr. Carden? You don't have any? To my, I, I think we've had a good thorough conversation. Can you just kind of speak a little bit to, like, what are your, what are the next steps you're going to do with these outcomes in terms of, you know, conversations inside the, the, the school, schools with the school leaders and teachers?
Sure. So next, the next round of visits from our leaders will take place over the next couple of weeks of school community meetings. And I think at that point in time, we'll be able to really hear specifically from schools around what the practices and strategies are that are currently in place in schools that are leading to what we're seeing here. And that's not to say everyone will come and talk about M C A S, right? But we'll get a sense of what's happening. In terms of, on my end, the next layer of this is to really sit with the data and take a look at what is happening in terms of some of the cohort trend data. Look at what's happening with. What's happening with the performance of our M L L learners. I mean, also our students with I E Ps, all the students who are in our focal groups, and really look at the practices that we currently have in place, but also looking at if what we have been identifying as supports and strategies, really taking a look at those and seeing if it's really working. And really looking at some of the partnerships that we have going on throughout the district and seeing if they're really aligned in the proper way with what students really need. That really is M T S S. So looking at, looking at the, the, the levels of our students, the performance and the supports, and making sure that they're all working together. Also, I am going to be working with my director's team just to make sure that everyone is just fully aware of where we're at right now, based on this one data piece here. But also making sure that they have what they need in order to support the educators in the departments.
And is the data shared with, with teachers and discussed at all levels, or how does it work?
We're working on that, yeah. Sometimes to.
Well, she said you're working on it, so it's yes.
You sound thrilled about that, Ms. Keyes.
Yeah, maybe, oh, I'm glad you're here, I'll ask you.
Yeah, I, I mean, you say yes, right? And I would say yes, and how it's shared may not necessarily be the best way for folks to access and understand it.
Yeah.
And so, yes, and is my response.
Yeah, but I mean, I, I want to know if there's a dialogue. Like I said, one of the best things I've learned in, you know, when I did this sort of thing, which I, I mean, I run a human services organization now, and I ran a smaller place. But was when we would take the data and have folks in the room talking about it. And then I would learn the most about, like, what the faculty who did the work thought about the data.
Our school leaders are doing that. They are having those conversations, and it's specific to their local school, right? It's not district wide, I would say.
Yeah.
Is it?
So was it good? Is it help, I mean, what do you, like, what do you get out of these meetings?
So, I mean, I don't teach an M C A S subject, and I was looking at M C A S graphs at my first department meeting of the year. As just a, as a reminder of what we're all working on.
What was an interactive conversation? Was it a conversation where you were going through it, or what was going on?
We didn't have specific scores at that point, so it was just looking at trends and things like that.
Yeah.
But I, I can tell you, like, what Kersey was mentioning earlier, like, yeah, no, I've sat in that meeting. We were like, these are the kids who are just under, we can get these kids up. Like, that's going to be a focus of ours, like, let's find these kids.
Good.
So the Open Architects platform has been great because we can get granular data at this point. So that has been really helpful. I would also say this year, there's, there's always a little pushback to M C A S as a standardized test, as a measure. This year, knowing it was graded by A I, not by people, people are, there's a lot of distrust as to, like, what are we actually getting out of this? So I think that the, the conversations are happening.
Can I give an example?
Yes, you can give an example.
So this is from the M T S S deck that we shared yesterday at Thompson.
Okay.
And one of the, and this is worth actually highlighting for the community too, because this is, when, when I said cohort data show shifts prior to year-over-year data, this is what that means. So I'm going to explain what this is showing and then tell you what the question was that we asked the room and what some of the reactions were. One of them, Dr. Ford Walker mentioned earlier. These are all grades three through eight cohorts, starting with third grade, 2034. They only have one dot on this graph over here, because it was their first testing year. 2023, which is the current fourth grade class, fifth grade class, sixth grade class, seventh grade class. Nope, nope, nope. Fourth grade class, fifth grade class, six, seven, eight, nine is the class 2029.
Yeah.
These little tabs across the top show what the prior years were, and it breaks it out in a couple of different ways. For the groups that actually have four years of data, that's that four years along the top here. For the groups that have three years of data, that's this group right here. And these are students with I E Ps. So this is percent of students with I E Ps meeting or exceeding standards in this cohort for all of these cohorts. Makes sense? Over the prior three years, the trajectory, the trend for all of our students with I E Ps was decreasing, declining, percent meets exceeds in aggregate. Last year, this testing year, all of them went up. And this is a tighter group. So you know, remember when we showed the attendance graphs for all students, it was tighter. And generally, what that will tell us is that we're more consistent and that we have more coherence. So there's less fluctuation, there's less wild movement between 23 and 24 in these groups. Something changed. And when we showed this graph yesterday, we had walked through, like, how to look at it, and we had explained the larger trends. And then we asked everybody, okay, what gives? How? What happened last year? What changed for you? And this was where one teacher said, well, we got paid more. And that's not nothing, and we acknowledged that, it matters, right?
Yeah.
And then they started to surface things, like, oh, well, you know, we shifted this. One teacher said, well, we'd have a new curriculum, but that wouldn't have hit the older grades. So, okay, true, but what did change seven years ago, six years ago for you all? And would that then be impacting these kids later when they're in E L A? When they had foundations or Hegarty, and we taught phonics when they were little, and now they're better able to access a more rigorous curriculum at the middle level because of some of the work that happened, right? Something shifted. And so that's our work, is like, what are all the things that we adjusted last year? But then also, what are the things that are now compounding? Because we've built some shared language, and we've built some coherence, and we've built some capacity for folks to look at data and to use that to inform what they're doing with instruction. And I think, you know, all of those things are what shifted. But it's most notable that we were not showing the impact of a lot of those compounding things. But last year, boom, like, all of our students in every single cohort who have I E Ps improved markedly over the 4% mark that we have in the strategic plan, in many cases, 11% for the class of 2031, 11% for the other two classes above them. It's pretty remarkable.
Got it. Okay, good. I didn't mean to derail the whole thing. Go, Kersey, do you want to say something?
I just wanted to clarify, when I said I'd like to see students out of the red bar and into the gray, I didn't mean just for the, I wasn't trying to game the test.
Well, it's A I graded now, so maybe it can.
I wasn't trying to game the test, and I'm sure the teachers aren't trying to game the test either. It's more that I'm just concerned that there's students down there who aren't meeting at all, and I want them to at least meet some. And that's not ignoring the whole testing stuff, just that that allows me to see that they're down there and I can talk about them, but that's all.
Okay, good. Thank you.
I want to throw one more positive on the list, the bullet point list of all the reasons we're doing well. We've significantly increased special ed and support staff, like counseling.
Yeah.
And I think we're really seeing that that pays off.
Got it. All right, thank you very much. You, you had slides in there, Mona, about like the, all the, that are not, I don't think, and know this.
Okay, we'll make sure that.
That's true, that's, yes.
So can you just, I think the public, we, we showed all this stuff.
Okay, yes.
But they, they're only seeing some, okay.
Got it, okay.
Uploading, okay. All right, good. Okay, now we move on to the first read, policy J J E.
Okay, policy J J E.
Yeah.
Uh, this is a policy regarding student fundraising activities. M A S C sent us a memo earlier this year saying that due to change in state regulations, we needed to add the line, "Students and student groups are barred by state law and regulation from organizing raffles or games of chance, participating in the sales of or purchasing tickets of such games." So that would be the second red paragraph in the copy before you. And in comparing our current policy to the model M A S C policy, we didn't have the other red paragraph in which fundraising activities may not involve competitions among students. And the subcommittee decided it would be important to include that M A S C language into our policy. So J J E is before us as a first read and will be considered at the next meeting for second read and adoption.
Does anybody have any questions on this for Mr. Schlickman? Okay.
Good. Next, we go to F F policy for special dedications to school facilities. The task was to merge the F F A, which is our special policy for high school, which worked fairly well with our policy for the rest of the district. So this was the task we had, was to merge them. So the recommendate, recommended vote in first read would be to delete F F A and adopt F F as amended, and the new language is in red.
Does anyone have any questions about this? So just, F F, and so the members are, okay.
So what we're looking at is more of an ad hoc committee. So when, when something shows up for, say, Dallin, that we're pulling representatives from the Dallin School to be part of the ad hoc committee. If, if it's something at the high school, we'd be pulling high school folks as being part of the required members. Remember, the panel for any of these ad hoc will be no more than 11, and we're restricting six of the 11 appointments, including, we have one member to be put on by vote of the school committee. And this would only activate if there was a proposal that came before us.
Any questions on this? Who would the proposal come from, like the?
Anyone could, yeah, anyone could bring a proposal to us. So somebody came and said that, you know, I want to name the Jeff Fieldman.
No, bad example. Paul Schlickman.
Well, whatever. But, but if somebody came up with a proposal, we'd have to have a mechanism for dealing with it. It could be a member of the public, it could be a member of the committee, it could be requested by the school. Where it comes from is really not relevant. The question before us is, if one shows up on our doorstep, what do we do with it?
Okay.
And we have for second read and possible vote file, L B and L B A, which was the Relations with Other Schools and School Districts and the Middle School Pathway Exploration Policy, which we talked about at the last meeting and shared with the folks from Minuteman. They're happy with our policy. We need to adopt this so we can forward it to the state to meet a October 31 deadline. So I move adoption of L B and L B A.
Okay, there's a motion to adopt L B and L B A. I think we can do them together unless somebody wants to divide the question. Is there any discussion? Doctor Allison Ampe.
Comments about F F, but we could do that after.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't recognize you, I'm sorry about that.
You did too.
You did too. Okay, we'll go back to F F. But F, but let's just, can we get this one done? Is that okay? You guys okay with that? Okay. Any discussion on L B and L B A? Okay, is Mr. Carden still on the call?
I don't see him.
So we started as a hybrid meeting, I think I have to do a real call. So Mr. Carden is not here. Ms. Exton, what are you going to do? I'm trying to follow the rules here. Ms. Exton?
Yes.
Doctor Allison Ampe?
Yes.
Mr. Schlickman?
Yes.
Ms. Gilson?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay, five to zero. All right, we got that one done right. Okay, I'm sorry, you guys wanted to talk about F F, and I kind of jumped in. Go ahead.
So I'm just trying to, so my, my first question, I think I've answered. So the, this piece about going to the Public Memorial Committee is still there. It just got replaced or moved down. Okay, and then my other question is, so the advisory committee makes a recommendation to this. And then my other question is, so the advisory committee makes a recommendation to the school committee?
Yes.
Then we make a preliminary vote to send it to the public memorial committee and then it comes back for final vote?
Right.
Okay.
So by, so let me just state that the procedure under the bylaw and what we're doing here is giving them 30 days to comment on this. So we vote a name change in a preliminary manner, send it to the public memorials and then we refer it after we receive advice from them.
Okay. So I guess where I'm confused is it says, when the advisory panel approves a recommendation, it shall be forwarded to the public memorial committee for an advisory opinion. Where does the school committee come in?
So I guess what we're doing here is allowing it to go to them for an advisory committee, advisory motion before we put it to a vote.
So I guess my comment would be that I, I believe, I think that the advisory panel, which is very clearly laid out, I appreciate that, should come to the school committee. Then I understand we have to go through this public memorials process.
Okay.
The way I'm reading this, the school committee doesn't see this until public memorials gets it and I, I, there sort of feels like a rubber stamp, to be fair. And so I think that we should have a first go at that.
I hear you. I hear you. We can, we can change the language to have it vote before it goes to public memorials.
Thank you, Ms. Exton. Dr. Allison Ampe.
She took my question.
Okay. Very good. I concur with Dr. Allison Ampe and Ms. Exton, so. Okay, good. And just, just to clarify, you know, the public memorials thing, I talked to our town council today, it's a courtesy to get input, but we still, we're accepting their recommendation, we're listening to their recommendation in every instance. And we still own, we're the governing body of the district.
Yeah.
And its buildings. So, okay. Just to keep that in mind, it's sort of an extra step, just, and you know, as the town council explained, it's a, it's there as a vetting in case we didn't know something about somebody being named. And their job is to do some extra vetting. That's what it is, and that gives us some advice. Okay. No other questions on this? I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't see everybody. Okay. Superintendent Evaluation, process discussion.
So this is about the time of year that I create a Google site and go find things that show progress towards some of the goals that I articulated to all of you. Those said goals were approved in January, it feels like it was yesterday, and it's about time that I report out on that. So I was going to start preparing that for a meeting in November for the school committee's consideration and evaluation. My question is quite simply, what format or approach, based on experience, would the committee like me to take for that? I can continue to put it together as a site. I could create a memo, we could forward this. There is actually a evaluation subcommittee, I believe, that was created a couple of years ago, that could meet to discuss it, if the committee would like some discussion. I, it can be a lot of material. I also don't want to necessarily take time putting material together that the committee won't have the capacity or time to review. So I'm open to input, I'm also open to giving this a little bit of time for folks to think about and bringing it back to the next meeting.
Anyone with any thoughts? Dr. Allison Ampe?
It's helpful for me to have everything in one place. It's also helpful to have one, it doesn't have to be long document, that is kind of your self-assessment thing, so, but that can be part of everything. That's...
The way you've received it in the past has worked for having it all in one place?
For me, yeah. It's, I've had to spend a lot less time finding things and coordinating and things than I have in years past.
Yeah, I appreciate the fact that we're looking at a self-assessment from the superintendent, which I think is a really good way to work with somebody you're evaluating. I, I want to caution that the superintendent sees a tough job, it's a big job, and I don't want the concatenation of evidence to be large enough that it's going to be weighty on the, on the actual performance of the superintendent and the things we're expecting her to do on a normal basis. I appreciate concatenating the information and pointing to things that were directly related in the, in the goals, but I really don't want an extraordinary amount of time to be spent in terms of presenting documentation, because I think we're pretty familiar with the work and we've seen evidence throughout the year.
Yeah, so I, my preference is always, I want to know the most important documents to read, because it's a lot of stuff. And I, you know, we're all different learners here and require different information, so I think, I think you have to sort of, you know, respond to, you know, everybody the best you can. And with Dr. Allison Ampe's approach, it gets all the materials in there, which is great. But I love a roadmap that says, you know, I'd love a summary. And I'd love your self-evaluation, how you feel you did on all the goals. That's like the most important thing for me is a self-evaluation from anybody I evaluate in my professional life. What do you think of how you did based on the goals that were set? So that, to me, is like, you know, how many pages have everyone liked that? So that's, that's where I'd start. And I do appreciate all the links to the documents that you did last year, that was really helpful, but I want to know the most important ones. That's me. But I'm only one, one person.
I, I think that I would sort of lean towards what Mr. Fieldman is saying. Like, I like the format and the information, but I don't know that the quantity of links is, you know, like, it's, I spend time sort of trying to figure out what's more important and what's not. And I think I agree with Jeff.
Yep. That feels so good. Thank you.
I have to.
Doesn't happen that often.
I mean, I don't know, we both went to law school.
I know.
We just think the same.
I know. That messed us up. It messed me up, not you. Okay.
I think you're not unlike, I've taken recently to, when we send, like, if I send a longer staff update, I'll have a quick summary at the top that has all the links and it's like a really fast thing. So it's similar.
That's what people read, yeah.
Yes. It's a similar approach if you just don't have time. Here's all the stuff you got to look at and then you can read below for more context. So I can do something similar for this. This is helpful. Thank you.
Okay. That's, so we're good? All right. Next, let's keep going. So, okay, so open meeting. I'm going to, I'm going to read the rec.
I think I have an update next.
You want to do that? Yeah, that sounds like a good thing. It's on the agenda.
It's short, I promise.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I'll be the judge of that. Go ahead.
So a few quick things to share with everybody this evening. First of all, we will be having an open house at Arlington High School this Saturday, October 25th, from 1 to 4, for any community members who are interested in seeing the gorgeous new facility at the high school, which is now, I'm not going to say done, it's almost done. We are very, very close and we're very excited to unveil the dedication plaque, cut the ribbon in the morning with the small ceremony, and then in the afternoon, celebrate with the entire community by opening up our doors. We have a lot of folks who will be volunteering and helping folks do a self-guided tour. We'll have a lot of information about the build and the project and the sustainability features of the new high school available. And so we invite members of the community to stop through and take a nice, long walk through this gorgeous facility and see all the opportunities that it opens up for our students and for our full community. I also wanted to note that November conferences are around the corner, that families will be getting notifications from schools and teachers about how to sign up for a time so that you can make a time to meet with teachers. We also very much understand that conflicts happen. And while we, it's certainly a lot easier for our teachers and for everybody, if you can make it during one of the designated conference times, please don't hesitate to reach out to your child's teacher if you need an alternative and we can find some time in the next couple of weeks. While, yes, we ask per the contract for educators to identify when they would be doing some of those additional contractual hours or times for students to stop in and meet, those are movable and flexible. And so they can adjust their office hours in a week to make time and room for a conference if necessary and absolutely will. So please don't hesitate to reach out if there's a conflict for you, knowing that we have a ton of conferences at a lot of schools happening in the next several weeks. Stratton Thompson and Hardy educators participated, as I noted and actually showed a slide from in the MTSS workshop with us on Wednesday of this week, and we had a lot of fun working with those teams. We held our APS family forum on our standard response protocol last week on Thursday. We had about 50 families attend the live session. We had a couple of technical difficulties with the sound, but luckily, the recording sound is perfect. So we sent that out and families received a link to the recording and some additional resources. I included those resources in your materials for this evening. As Dr. Ford Walker noted, we kicked off instructional rounds again this year, and they started last week. We had visits to our libraries and digital learning classrooms and high school classrooms. We're doing leadership workshops this year, also on our Wednesday times with administrators. They'll include legal topics on bullying and Title IX, as well as some workshops that Dr. Thomas, Ms. Elmer, and Dr. Ford Walker are working on together on navigating and using data platforms, doing inquiry cycles and using data to help develop instructional plans and interventions at the schools and with school-based teams. We received a competitive Preventing Hate Crimes grant from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in the amount of $20,000. We're really excited about this grant. We've used it for professional development and to bring in really exciting and engaging facilitators for some of our professional development. And that's what those funds will go towards supporting, as well as supporting our understanding our differences programming that we've implemented at all of our elementary schools. And we have a new Assistant Superintendent Finance and Operations starting November 3rd, and he'll be at our next meeting. We're excited to have him, I am very excited to have him join the team. And your enrollments are included in your materials. Happy to take any questions.
Anybody, any questions? Okay. Next item is open meeting law complaint. I spoke to town council today. First, any comment on the, on the complaint or its merits is admissible in any legal proceeding, so just bear that in mind. Their recommendation is to adopt, for the school committee to adopt the following motion. Move to refer the complaint to town council to manage the response with the complainant in the office of the attorney general.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I guess I still do a roll call. What do I do?
Yes.
So do a roll call. Mr. Carden? Ms. Exton?
Yes.
Dr. Allison Ampe?
Yes.
Mr. Schlickman?
Yes.
And Ms. Gittleson?
Yes.
And Mr. Fieldman votes yes. Okay, thank you very much. Consent agenda. Let me pull that up.
I'm going to get a charger.
What?
My computer's going to die. I'm going to grab a charger.
Okay, thank you. All right. Okay. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the committee so requests, in which event the item will be reconsidered in its normal sequence. Warrant number 26088 dated October 14, 2025, $1,103,090 and 30 cents. Final vote, naming of AHS facilities, principal's room, black box theater, and wood gym, policy FF.
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Carden? Ms. Exton?
Yes.
Dr. Allison Ampe?
Yes.
Mr. Schlickman?
Yes.
Ms. Gittleson?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay. Very good. We're catching up. Subcommittee and liaison reports. Budget, Dr. Allison Ampe?
Nothing to report.
Community relations, Ms. Gittleson?
Nothing to report.
Curriculum instruction assessment, Ms. Exton?
We have a meeting next Thursday at 3:30.
Thank you. Facilities, that would be Dr. Allison Ampe and I, we don't have anything to report. Policies and procedures, Mr. Schlickman?
We met on Monday. The draft minutes are in Novus, so if you're interested in what we did, it's all spilled out there for you.
Arlington High School Building Committee, I can, Kersey can add some, anything I forget. You know about Saturday, so please come. The committee has been looking at remaining funds to make some final purchases so that we don't have to go to capital planning for anything else a school might need. So we're kind of in that final process right now. And then we, we have work to do as a committee, because the, you know, you don't end it until the punch list is done and all that stuff. So it'll be 10 years of service by the time we finish in '26. What did I forget?
That we're expecting to turn back potentially around $400,000 to the town.
Yes.
So that is taxes, which will not be taken from residents.
So at this moment, we are, we have, you know, stayed under budget and Dr. Allison Ampe has made sure that the schools, that the Arlington High School got all the things it possibly needed so it would not impact our budget that much in the future. Is that accurate? Well, you did with the thing you did last year.
It won't impact our budget next year.
Yeah, right. Okay.
Ever again. I wish.
Well, I'm talking about this.
I know.
Yeah, I know what I'm talking about.
Just one year.
Huh?
Just one year.
Okay. So, all right. Anyway, it was good, good, good work by the committee. Okay. Hopefully I'll be a little sharper on Saturday. That's it. Any, any liaison reports? Announcements. So we have a vacancy on the school committee and policy BBBE is the policy that we use to fill an unexpired term. We are responsible for posting the vacancy in a process by which we select someone, possibly we select someone who's dictated by the policy. We're required to post the opening and get applicants for the opening and then invite those applicants to a meeting at some point in the future. What we've done in the past is reach out to former school committee members, and I'm not saying that's who we should select, so I don't want to, I want to make sure I'm clear on that. And in the past, we've done that for two openings that have happened in my term in the school committee. So as a courtesy, I did that, inviting them to apply if they wanted to. One, I think I can, I'm not talking out of school, Mr. Hayner said, no, he's very, very busy with many other things, and so he's not available. And then I reached out to three other members. One got back to me and said, maybe, they'll think about it. And two have not gotten back. So that would be the outreach and then we would post this and we would, we would hope people apply and then they would come in. We would take a vote as dictated in this policy. There's a, there's a ranking system that was set up in this policy several years ago. And then we have someone serving for about four and a half months until the election.
And then there'll be a one-year.
And then there'll be an election for one year, one-year slot. Yeah, that's right.
In 2012, when I had to run this, for the same reason that someone went from the school committee onto the select board, we did have, we just did a cattle call and Mr. Schlickman was the lucky winner. And, but there were a number of other people who came and explained their interest and we had, you know, they gave a statement and a resume and then they came and talked and we asked them questions and then we voted and it was, it was fine.
Yeah. I mean, I think our goal is to try to have people come here on Thursday, November 6th, at our next meeting. Is that, do you have them?
That's a you thing. You decide that.
I know it is, but I want to see if there's any input. Are people comfortable with that or feel it's too soon or what do you folks feel? Is that okay? Okay. So the idea would be that I would work with Ms. Diggins to use a similar format that the select board recently used. And we would publicize this as required to. People would submit their...
So it has to be posted for one week?
Correct.
Yeah, so November 6th.[1778.04]
Yeah, it posted for one week. Everything would have to come to us by a date certain, let's say, you know, the Tuesday before the meeting. And then we, people come in and we interview them and take a vote.
Can I ask a question about publicizing? That's, yeah, it was good. What that looks like and whether the committee has interest in using any of our systems for that.
We want to use your system.
My question, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
In which case, I would suggest that the communication's coming from the committee.
Yeah, right.
Right? And so I can work with this on, how to blast that to everybody.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I think so. Yeah, I think we can talk to Joan Roman about how they did it.
And we'll need some specification to, around which populations in our systems we're sending that messaging to, so.
I think as broadly as possible.
It's vaguely spelled out in the policy that it says, "The school committee shall inform the public through all available media, including the school department's website, that a position on the school committee is vacant." So I mean, it feels like.
Pretty broad, yeah.
I don't know, one of the pop-up on the page. I don't know, but I'm just saying.
I think it's got to be pretty broad.
Yeah. Yeah.
And, yeah. Yeah. I think it's got to be broad. Okay. Any questions on that? All right. Now we move to executive session and we're not going to come back.
Correct.
With the vote?
I, we don't need to do it today.
Okay.
We can do it at the beginning of the next meeting.
What do you, we can do?
We can come back, I suppose.
Oh, you want to come back afterwards? Oh.
There's no need to.
We don't, but we don't need to. It's not urgent.
We can, we can vote in public at our next meeting.
Okay. This is like, okay. Very good. So there needs to be a motion to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation.